We go power, gin, or maybe order. And we're glad to have the school board with us always and uh we came at four o'clock so.
You guys put that fine one.
We're in bad shape. So I guess it's five o'clock right?
So five o'clock.
But as Saul Bauer said, Mr. Woods, he would you ladies.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you Lord for this beautiful day that you've created for us, dear heavenly Father, on this solemn time. Lord, for the blessings of this life which will now come down from the land of man, Lord, we thank you and we praise you. Dear heavenly Father, to be together here this evening, Lord, I thank you all, thank you all for the energy that they have in our county and in your children. Dear heavenly Father, ask you what you'd be with this evening, lead God direct us, Lord, to help any decisions that are made, be in accordance to your will. Lord, we thank you for the protection that you placed around your county in the last several months. But ask you, dear heavenly Father, if you would continue to keep our edge protection in hands. Dear heavenly Father, most God, we thank you for Jesus, for what he did for us so long ago, that I'm going to run across. Dear heavenly Father, on the third day, you raised me. We thank you in a prayer, Lord, in Jesus' name, pray.
And you know, since we're doing the video instead, got to do a little different than when we're doing make that fire. We need to go around on the commissioner board and each one identified with Sarah and with Sparky, Mr. Woody Young.
What about young junior commissioner?
Martha Hicks, chair.
Dennis Aldrich, commissioner.
Tim Phelps, commissioner.
White Fangs commissioner.
And we'll turn it over to you, John, and you do whatever.
Okay, thank you, Stan. As Martha, we'll go ahead and call to order two, uh, motion to move to open our meeting. Thank you, Kathy, second.
Second.
Thank you, Matt. All in favor?
Uh.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, we'll introduce ourselves too, if that's okay, Martha. I'm John Green, the Chair of Avery County Board of Education.
I have Steve Smith, Board Member.
I have everyone's Board Member, Kathy O'Leary, County Chair.
And Ray, Superintendent.
And Ms. Jane Bungarner would be here, but she was helping to do interviews this evening, so uh so she was not able to be both places at once. All right, I'll hand it over to you, Martha.
All right. And we want to welcome everyone and we've got C. D. of ours, she tries to hide, but she's a secretary. And we have actually our interim manager and we have Philip of the year, Philip Arrier. I don't know if I do.
Go to Washington. They're on vacation. That's our work. That's our work.
But we'll get right into our business and uh the first thing on the agenda is the crossroads going through and whoever wants to start that out with.
Okay, Martha, well, I'll hand it over to Dr. Green in a moment. We should just go with again, thank you all for hosting us tonight and for the support that you give. Avery County Schools, I know we say that all the time, but it is true. This is such a good working relationship that we have between our two boards to serve not only the children of Avery County, but all of Avery County. So thank you all for that, we certainly do appreciate that. And we, we've been talking about crossroad roof for several years now, knew that it was coming up. And then it's come time that we need to make some decisions on that. And we look forward to, to getting that project done. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I want to give each of you a heartfelt thank you for your support, not only for our annual budget approval, but for the, or the go ahead to seek bids for replacement of crossroads, uh, political roof. That's something we've been dealing with quite some time and reflecting back to our last joint meeting back in January, we had a discussion about the roof. We discussed metal versus shingle. And at that time, it was pretty unanimous that metal would be the best investment for the long term sustainability and the life of that roof. For fortunate, that was Mr. Jeffrey Jones, AKA Mr. Cash over in the corner. And with him is our project engineer, Mr. Hall, Mr. Hall is with us, he drove up and joined us tonight. Um, we did get the bids with Mr. Hall's support, the bids came in and the roof was under what we estimated originally 1.5 million. Lots transpired since January, so we did get the bids in. And at this time, Mr. James, Mr. Hall, you all understood that as and that they conditioned where we were at with those metal roof bids.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Um, as my friend said, we did open our bids and um we passed the bid tab on to the county, uh, at least following for your approval. Well, as led us here tonight, um, so we're ready to begin the project soon as funding is allocated. I'll let Mr. Hall Nelson speak off. We'll let Nelson speak today and just answer any questions. We pretty much just come to you tonight to answer any questions you may have as to where we are, what we need to do, where we're building. When we bid the project, I met Mr. Hall the first time, we solely went with a metal roof replacement. It's like Green said, when we, last time we met in January, we talked about it, that was the direction that we felt we'd given. Uh, so we had not looked at possibility of shingles, uh, what that cost would be. We hit the line of metal, uh, put those out there, got back to the bid and the results were very close. Uh, so I don't believe we had a single bidder that way above anybody else who wanted to play below. Um, they ranged uh from the low bid, the seascape, the 1.4 million and change uh to a tin trap, which was slightly higher, 1.8. Um, the average would have been around one and a half, as like Green said. And we met in January, we provided to the letter that we gave our board back in the first fiscal year, estimating the shingle roof would run approximately $800,000. Thinking at that time, the metal roof 1.5. So we felt good about the bid where it came in, did come in slightly under the 1.5. I do know that there are additional costs associated to that. We have the engineering costs as well as we've got some groundwork we need to do uh for the guttering system. And what we decided to do there, what is a lot to do there, is we pulled that groundwork out for the bid uh and decided that would be something that we could bid out locally. We have enough people in our county that are well versed in digging. And we felt like it would just be better for the county for us to do that. And it would be to take a roof because it's potentially coming from off the mountain. Let them subcontract that out and then add their 10% plus their bond, plus their property. And so we thought we'd be better off all around to do it that way. And of course, we, we can do it the other way if y'all tell us, but that's kind of where we are. So with that, Mr. Nelson is here to answer any questions, provide you any information that you feel you need.
Jeff, I have to ask one question before we get started. How many bids did we take on?
Four, four.
Okay.
We had five contractors that, we went through a pre qualification process similar to what we do with school building construction. So we had five contractors that responded, of the five, four, we pre qualified, that's one, we disqualified because they just didn't have a work record. And again, that on preview, we felt like that would qualify them for.
What is the actual scope of the work that's got to be done? Is it just a metal replacement? Is there some structural damage? I mean, what, what has to get in?
Okay, what we're doing is we're taking the, taking all old shoe fall. And what we'll do then is we'll cover it with ice and water. That way, and we're doing that for a couple of reasons. Uh, it gets all the mess out of the way to start with it. Uh, this job is going to be slow going back in terms of putting the new metal roof assembly back on because there's so much flash. And I'll show you about that in just a minute. And uh, there's several of that, just putting that ice and water shield that keeps dry during the project. And it gets the mess all over and done with it, start the job. Then we start putting on the, first thing we start with the metal roofs. You put the doppers and the flashing in and then you hook everything to that so that it's got an expansion joint with flashes. And then you go up to the ridge cap and fasten the roofs there. And then you put your roof cap, ridge cap on that to get all the panels. The problem is with this roof, it's, it's cut up. You can see through the layout of the roof. Technically, uh, okay, let's just hold one side. If you, if you look, we've, we've got more than two roofs that don't have calculations on. But they'll, they'll get the flashing in, they'll get started on this roof, normally six panels. Then they got to start flashing around this. Then they, which of course slows it down. And it's just, then they get around that even timely and they get here and they land on 20 panels. Then they start flashing down. And it's just that way, you can see, really, 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 I mean, it will, it will, it's that way around the entire roof. And that's one, and it's just a very labor intensive job. So uh we've been doing this a long time. We got system, a system that works. It's called flashing, it was a poor part of the, of the, of the roof assembly. So uh, we spent a lot of time on the flashing, uh, detailing it out and contractors, that's going to be the short block event. We feel like we've been doing this 25 years with these details, we really love having failure. And, and I'm not going to stand here and take it, we never had a roof, but we have had a roof. We spent millions, we don't have very many.
Is there any change to anything underneath the roof structure? Because that seems to have been the question from day one. Trust is there? Which that was put together, so that does, this does nothing to resolve that issue, correct?
We will not worry, there is crush issue as much as we all, ventilation issue.
So the trust is in good shape as well, I'm asking for a third of it today.
We know that ventilation was issue. But ventilation was issue. And that's, that's, and I don't, I don't know because I'm just speculating and, and you know what that's worth. But I would guess the architect who designed the school said, let's put a metal roof on the string and design it like that. And then the budget got tight and they said, we're going to go shingle. And then, and then it wasn't business, it's not insurance. We put you back on and I can show you what we got to do to do that. Get a warrant, you know, my spring and that's what. That's ventilation.
Ventilation.
Ventilation was, my roof was better, yeah, and probably the flashing. All of these calculations, you just, valleys and ridges. You just got a lot of flashing in there where she was like to go in and bend the fiber glass, they don't like to be. And everyone's got to lay in there on top of it and bend and then don't like that. And, and the fact that they get so hot, it's going to crack. And that's, that's what, that's what, once the, the lot, the lot exists here, the roof system, what this, this wants to propose. If you take care of this roof, the last you did.
Is ventilation going to be addressed?
With a metal roof, you don't have to ventilate. Uh, there's a little bit of airspace between the metal and the, and the ice and water shield, but it's, it's metal. But that, that's enough to.
Will it take care of the condensation?
Well, we're not going to have any condensation and that's all one of the reasons we're putting that ice and water shield down. We want that ice and water shield down there to stop that condensation, give it up to the metal where it can. And it serves as, it serves as a vapor retardant and it also serves as an air barrier, which I don't know how much y'all know about wind damage to roofs, but roof, buildings don't blow light and they blow up because when the wind starts blowing, the air pressure is lower. And it's enough to make these buildings literally blow up. What you do by controlling that air pressure is you, you spread it out where that ice and water shield is waterproof and everybody, you spread that load out over a great big wide area. So it's not putting a whole lot of stress on just one pass.
Mr. Hall, you are on the contractor, you're moving all of the existing changes, take it down to.
To the pilot. Yes, I've got, I've got a diagram of exactly what you have, if y'all would like to see that.
More?
Yep.
Well, one reason we're asking so many questions is that sometimes states can remember if they said that raptors just won't have come out and that's why we're asking so many questions.
We weren't made aware of it.
I'm not so sure, I'm not so sure about that. One of the main points, is that wrong with talk, they always ventilation got me on the ridge cap. They were talking about making one different style of roof, like that, like a change to fit or something like that. But he's already looked at, at this design, this design.
We didn't see any, we didn't see any visible uh issues with the structure from where they're working. If you want us to do a structural analysis or anything, you can do that. I don't think we can get in. Please no. Well, somebody's saying we can do it, but we don't, don't think through, if you're firm in that work, that's, that's. We want to give you enough to get the job done.
The initial report that Lee provided to me back in 2016 uh on the structure and the wall was causing the shingles to deteriorate, the roofs began leaking. Uh, Mr. Cannon, at that time, he indicates that the lack of ventilation may have been a factor in splitting. That the roof heats up and cools down, the induced stresses cannot be relieved at each shingle as they should. Every, every item that he's referring to, the issue that has to do with ventilation. And he does not reference anything in the document about that the rafters have been damaged. It may have been said at a meeting that if we don't prepare the roof and the roof against the leak, a leak could lead to an issue with the rafters needing to be replaced and cause water damage. But that was not addressed in this report. And of which he did say that we need to address this within three to five years uh in order to keep further damage from happening.
I'll have to go back to my original question. Does this address the ventilation?
Yes, it does. We, we, you have, you have some gables up there. And the gables, the only ventilation you need is enough to run your HPA steel. The metal roof does not have to be ventilated. If you'd like to go with shingles, I've got another line and you can go over there. Okay, okay. But the, you would, we have addressed, we have, we know that there's a problem with putting shit on this roof. We know that we can put the metal on there without having to go to great lengths about ventilating because the metal is going to expand and contract. And, and the way we've got it designed and it will not, it will not hurt it, not have a ventilation system. In fact, it practically functionally about.
Is this a written warranty for 50 years?
No, it's a written warranty. All we've got is a 30 year warranty on all components of the roof assembly. And that includes the washroom, port, and then the track.
But it should, because this other roof is 28 years. Is that normal for Asa?
For shingles?
Yeah.
Uh, shingles last 20 years. By the time it gets 20 years, usually you're ready to replace them because they've been bleached for about 30 years. Generally, now mine's been on my house for 15, 18 years now. But I put the pretty best I could buy on there, but I didn't want it, I put the ice and water shield on there. And it would do, during the, the elected bench and suddenly after the time. But I know that I can start seeing some powder class on the roof. And it's gone, it's, 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 I don't have more years.
It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to spend 800,000 on shingles and turn around in 20 years and spend another 800,000 on shingles. Or 900,000 for me, I can not put a good piece of metal.
Well, we're going to have, he ran it just a little. The roof's just the last of all time. You take care of this roof and basically you just got to keep the doppers clean, make sure you don't have a bunch of stuff up there that's accumulating rain on the roof. And rust starting. Feels 24 gauge, uh, galvanized steel and it's called aluminum. It's got an aluminum coating in there. And then actually the aluminum coating is put on. There is a kind of finish, whatever color you all want, there's kind of a finish that goes on. And that's about the kind of color type, color. A good example of life is Riverside, bucks for 35 years, Riverside, metal roof, has had some minor maintenance. I lived there twice, 25, but.
I'm 35, I've had minor maintenance too and I'm still here. Minimal maintenance.
Back to conversation.
Yes, sir.
If the speak container looks as much as 50 degrees Fahrenheit, it's intended to use some of that.
This conversation so hard that it, it is, and we think we have done a deep point calculation on that. And you, the deep point in this roof is depending on what time of the year it is, it's down in the insulation. And when it's down in the insulation, it doesn't have to be condensed, it condenses on, then it stays in gaseous form. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't drain with water. It can't get up high enough to a cold surface because we've got the vapor retardant, we've got the insulation up there. It can't, water vapor can't get to the place where the condensation. In other words, you've got, you've got your metal, you've got the waterproof in one way, you've got a layer of plywood, and you've got a layer of three inch uh plastic foam insulation. Like moisture's trying to get up to that metal to condense, that's where it wants to be, almost like get up there and it's that cold surface. You can't, the way we've got this roof designed and built, it can't do that. Now we've got screws going through it. And if it's 10 degrees outside or zero degrees outside, 20 and below, I grew up in Mitchell County, so I know about that stuff. And it, you know, those screws, you might get, they've gotten too long, one or two of those screws. I feel very comfortable, you're not going to have a condensation problem. Look at that, the calculation on that. Now, if there's one place that you had, those dormers where the vents are, those. Now, I'm almost positive on that because my associate come up here and looked at that. But he said, when he looked inside, one day insulation on the deck in there. So that might be where some of the problems where you've had condensation pass. What we're going to do when we get, when we, when we get this project started, take those loopers off. Insulate around that pipe that's coming out so that there's not a cold steel surface up there, the condensation will go on. That might be one of the places to express, that'd be a good place for that.
Okay, I'm going to answer $64 question, I know it's my issue, thank you guys. 2016, when we started this, we were thinking 3.1, we made it $11,000. That would get to $11,000.
We, we started, we, we knew that it was going to be, we were thinking 1.2, I thought for, yes, as per battleground. I think that was probably where it was like in 2016, uh, Mr. Cannon estimated 1.16, 2016.
Closer than I thought.
The, the six, the 6, 800,000 dollar range has been the shingle range. There's a 5, 5 member in certain drawn line. Uh, and it's been between 1.2 and 1.5 is what we tried to express over the years. And I know when, when I presented this back in the budget cycle, the 17, 18 school year, uh, we brought that to you at that time. We, we did present the numbers based on a shingle replacement. Uh, because the assumption was we'll go with the lower amount, that we had a shingle roof, go back to the shingle roof. But then in those conversations, it was evident that it was everyone's intention would perceive as metal. And it was going to be more expensive. So we, the initial, the initial presentation was for shingles and that would be about around $700,000. And we quickly abandoned that and said, well, when the time comes. And of course, at that time, we were telling you it's three to five years out, we just wanted to make you aware of it. Uh, because we didn't want to come in in a single year with less one and a half million dollars in addition to our normal quest to come on and filter and stroke out on us. For the sake of the issue.
Let me tell you one more thing. This gentleman that, that reported, I've known him for four years. He's a very good, he's a very good researcher. Uh, and his estimates are usually pretty close to being on, on, on the bottom spot. It, since he wrote that report, we had extreme labor issue with construction. How many folks are in construction or have never been in construction? So you know what I'm talking about. We went back and looked at the last 50 projects we had that were over about $400,000. And starting in about 1916, 2016 to now, the prices have doubled. So this is a pretty good price, taking all things into consideration because we've got the labor, I mean, you've got the colonial virus issue that's got everybody on pins and needles. And congratulations to your county for being, trying to get a couple of cases out here. Well, it's not going, I don't think it's going to be cheap for things we've done, so we might as well back forward.
Well, now I'll tell you how I feel about it. I come from my old stage and we always try to do me down.
I'm certain you'll be shocked.
I'll never bother you if I'm going to be in front of you down. And I think, I mean, I've been here since 2008 and I've heard the school discuss. And at one time, we put mine back and was going to start it and it was watching the beam. But then, school decided they needed other things, so they put it on reserve. And I know things has gone up. You want to buy groceries for the same price that you got them in January for. But uh, we have saved a little bit of money to go on it, but it's sure not a big deal then. And uh, we know that our birthday for next year. And, uh, we know that our budget for next year is gonna be a lot different than what it was this year. And, so, I know this is a lot of money, but now I will agree that we need to do a metal roof. And we don't wanna have to go back and do it, but, uh... Jeff said we had... I see it.
Jeff, what, I, I don't have that issue right in front of you right now. What's our, our number?
So the actual contract for construction is one million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Add to that, the engineers, the, which, when I came to you back in winter, told you that would be eight percent. Um, and, uh, Ms. Martha, I come from a long line, Dave, you don't ask, yes, a little bit. So we did go back to Mr. Hall and ask, we can do a little bit better than that, and Mr. Hall did come back, what, seven and a half?
Seven and a half, and, and then we did, we feel like, while we were doing this, we had to do some civil engineering, because you've got some underground drainage, and that's something Jeff's part of. And we'll manage that, we just like the general contractor. We, we, we're, we're administration of this party, so we're gonna do that at the same time as we do the roof. My calls city, my calls kids, that, that service is gonna be included in the theme that we proposed. It amounts to ten or twelve percent this time.
Oh, wow, I put a little bit of that in part.
Well, I do have, I do have, and I'm even, somebody's gonna ask that, can we make it any cheaper? We can go without, without changing anything, we can go from a thirty year warranty to a twenty year warranty. Would y'all be interested in that?
This is a general bill?
Same as that, same exact, same exact construction. Yes.
So what you're going, just getting out any warranty for the last ten years?
Yeah, but then you said, you're saying if you take care of the last ten?
This is, it's, it's gonna be on you to take care of. If you take care of it, it won't be on. It's gonna be on that, if you take care of it. Your warranty's gonna, your warranty's gonna accept it anyway. And we, and I do it, I do it. I, for the most common public school maintenance association, I did a presentation, I do a presentation about roof warranties. And, and you can, you can save fifty thousand dollars, maybe fifty thousand dollars off that contract cost, if you, if you change the front.
But the metal is same game.
Everything is exactly the same.
Don't change, everything stays the same.
Everything's the same, and I wouldn't offer it, however, I'll offer it to you.
Now, could we not prove for education, for, for, then architectural work, certified work?
At eight percent of the contract.
But did we not provide money for it to be done?
I'm not saying that. But we have requested...
They have requested a pay.
We haven't drawn, drawn down any budget because we're not at a point to pay. We're getting very close to that. Yes, you did, back in the winter, when we came to the, uh, the normal month of May, we made that request of eight percent, and it was based on one and a half million dollars as a budget. But I just wanted to let you know, we did go, we did discuss it, and I did go back and talk.
So it's a, so it's a, it's a highly...
So, go back to that twenty year warranty. What is the difference in the, in what we're getting? You're not getting any different mail.
No, no, the only thing you've gotten is a, the only thing you've gotten is a piece of paper that's about fifty thousand dollars and sits thirty on. That is the only thing that's changed about this party.
It's like an extended warranty for your car.
Yeah, it's like, I have an extended warranty. And, and one of the reasons we went, we go down to the station, is because we wanna, we wanna deal with good contractors and true, true contractors. We won't do the same amount, that's thirty years.
Can I do your conversation?
You're saying here, I mean, professional roof. I think that if I leave, if I take care, I'm gonna get fifty years out of it. And that's kind of their weather, they've dropped down to twenty and taken fifty thousand dollars. I mean, what do you think?
The thing, thing about it is, I, I'm, I'm on a little track, uh, and wait, this contractor that put it, the chances of him being in business in X amount of years, or that I, having up with him, anything over ten years. I, I, I'd rather put the fifty thousand dollars back in the box. Can one of the child manage that, and I had to go with that. But, at the same point, we want the same craftsmanship by the workers, as if they were putting on a fucking new warranty. We don't want no shortcuts in craftsmanship.
That's my job.
Where do you live now?
I live, I live in Monroe. But I don't know how many of y'all will get your hair cut across the street here by a workshop.
Dallas.
Dallas is my worst husband on my mother's side, and my hairdresser on my father's side.
No, I, I, I think, and I hope things about warranty, every time I hear a discussion about warranty on anything, but especially something like this, I, I kind of cringe, because my experience has been that a warranty, a piece of about forty-two dollars will get you covered. And...
It's available now.
It's, in twenty years or whatever, like Steve says, the chances of that same entity being in that same, uh, uh, not just place, but in the same configuration, not being fire or soul or something. And it's just, even if it's a manufacturer warranty, you know, uh, it's, it's difficult. And then it becomes, we're gonna prorate this, we're gonna continue this, we're gonna, we're gonna show that you did not maintain it. I mean, I, I'm just very skeptical about warranties.
Well, you sound, you sound like you've been sitting in the mic, isn't it? There's a whole adage in the roofing industry, and I don't dis- dissuade y'all from living there, but there's a whole adage in the roofing industry, it's one of the ones that's in the guarantee of the outside.
How much would ten years cost?
They, 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 they got some of this. It would, it would probably, they probably wouldn't discount it, they don't... I've been handling all this, guys, because I'm hearing somebody like you for that same thing.
We, we, we came up, whenever it came up, I was, the full disclosure, the meeting where notes were there, whenever it come up before, and we talked about eight percent. You know, that was, we, we felt that was a pretty happy number, uh, considering all the, the things that had been replaced. And, uh, so that's what we're part of this, what Martha was talking about, and just, remember, and we did, when we were looking at this, uh, we were hoping to be surprised in what we gained. Uh, because of the money that we allocated, you know, that they've gotten reserved, uh, with everything else that's gone out this year, uh, you know, it's, it's, it interests us.
There's one thing we need to keep in mind, that whatever we're gonna do, we're on a tight time. There's no risk, we're gonna go all day, can, we're gonna be saying what's a first and foremost. If we're gonna try to get a roof on that building, we need to get it turned around, and we'll turn that contractor loose as soon as possible. And, uh, that's a target for y'all, let, just kind of keep that in mind. That's why, a student is an example of not being able to bid at the right time, or even to wait another year, to be able to get it built. If we don't get that contractor, if that contractor don't start within thirty days, we will get hired to roof on this year, not the height this year.
We've got, we've got a day limit on this contract. And what is it?
Twenty, it's a hundred and twenty.
That's what I thought. They, they indicated that, they, you're fixed working a hundred and twenty, so if we started...
Now, does that, well, that count, that, that weather days count on there?
That can, that's, that counts Christmas, that counts, true birthday, that counts. We have hundreds, hundreds of days.
Or study fishing season. So, so if they started, yeah, there's twenty seconds.
There, there is a way they can get extra days, and, and there's a chart in those, in specifications, and so, in June, typically, there's six rain days. Okay, they have to figure that into their contract. If there's nine rain days in June, then they can come back to us and say, there was three extra rain days in June, they don't go to swings, but they have to do it all.
But the rain is rain, if they're big finish in two thousand twenty-two.
Well, we like pushing along, because, you know, it's...
Can, can your contract finish that job on the front touch?
Yes.
Because I know the building, certainly, I know the building, yes, it's a big building.
It's a big building, and it's cut up, but they, they can do it, uh, it's a, it's a huge roof, it's a, the cityscape is a small part of the whole building, which is probably, they probably do fifty million dollars for the roof.
Jeff, what, what was your, that ultimate that we pulled out for the ancillary work, the gathering, grid work, what, we, we have a figure of that at all?
We're anticipating that not to exceed eight thousand. I wouldn't think it would be that much, or we're dealing with, this needs to be a, old guttering, piping, this is new. Right, I mean, it is, it's, it's what he said, it is a big building, so it's, it's not just...
How many square feet are we talking in that roof?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty?
One, six, five.
Do you know how bad's the building leaking now?
There are, what I understand, there are three actively, presently, with every time it rains, water is getting into the building. Uh, they... Yeah, and, and the way, the weather's been lately, it's, it's, it's leaking a lot. They, they do go up on roofs, they will try to identify where the water's coming in, they will caulk it. Uh, and what happens is, they'll caulk it here, and then the water goes past that and finds another area to give in. So, uh, the, the, the front office, the media center, and right, uh, in front of the gymnasium, are the three areas that ten people wants to recognize. Now, that, that also, it doesn't include other areas where, you know, from time to time, they'll get water. But I feel like there are three places that it consists of every time.
Where do you act, tell me, dollars per cent, appears, proposal, for sure, eighty thousand dollars per year?
One million, six oh two, fifteen.
One million, six fifty, twenty-five.
I'm taking the fifty thousand off of that, I'm going with that twenty year warranty. That goes with the twenty year warranty.
One million, six oh two, five.
Did you go with the twenty year warranty? Did I do that right? I'm out of time.
One, six, oh, two, fifteen. Is that eight percent or seven point five?
Seven point five. No, 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 there'll be a discount.
Is that right?
Not really, one or fifty thousand dollars, six, seven, eight, seven.
Does that also include seven point five?
Yeah, yes.
We're talking about a million, six hundred thousand dollars here, and I think I'll make ten dollars.
No, we don't.
Well, now, I've had metal roof on my house, and I was trying to figure out, and I know it's twenty year old. And all I've ever done, I had a hand to check it, check the screws, see if any of them are pulled up. And the main thing about metal roof is keeping the gutters clean, that's all. Because if you dump, the water can get up in that gutter, and it can go right back up in the under, and then you've got problems around the edge.
And we do address that in our specifications. They're one on the front edge, they're one on the back edge. You didn't get to walk to say, I'm gonna do something.
And there's not a lot of tree, it's not, it's happening by trees on that area. But it's a little bit easier. We've had problems with not used the...
Matt and Chad, we can talk about this till September, I don't know if it's, I think we all have what we need to do, so I'm gonna ask that we have consensus to put this on our, as a budget amendment on our July meeting.
And just so you'll know, going back, refiguring, taking the fifty thousand off, for the, the warranty, adjusting the engineer studies based on that cause, and then the eighty thousand for, uh, doing the groundwork. Uh, one million, five ninety-eight, seven sixty, would be the estimated project total.
Now, is that the twenty year?
Twenty year warranty.
We sure, six fifty, ten? Was that what we had, Bill?
We have six eighty-three. So we would need a, a amount of nine hundred and fifteen, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, seven sixty. Nine fifteen, seven sixty. Uh... A million dollars. I don't think, I'm not allowing this to happen, so. I'm asking, I'm, I'm, I'm offering consensus to put this budget amendment on July, maybe.
Uh, what's your downtime? With appropriate money, would you, uh, what would be your downtime to get able to start?
If you can tell, if you can give me a notice to proceed with contract right now, we can start by end of July, I thought. But I'd have to have an assurance that they could go to start ordering materials and getting all the paperwork created. And I'll get the contract, we'll, 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 forty-five, you have that, and then we, fifty thousand dollars, amendment, I have nothing else.
I wish work with school, one of the children in the building, we do this all the time, children in the building, now, that's one of the reasons, well, y'all, the shingle wall, is that water couldn't run down. Because that's the messy part, and that's the part where, because they'll, they'll took the metal up on the roof, they'll spread it out on the roof, and then there'll be very little activity on the, I hope so. But it's very, the black people on the ground. But we, we work with school districts all the time, and work with the, uh, children at schools, you know, we've got, we're gonna have a guy on site, probably two days a week, three days a week, going to have, have the job going. Will have, have your office moving. Uh, but he will, he and the roofing superintendent will be in contact with that principal, and Mike McCannon, Jeff, and whoever, whoever we're instructed to be in touch with, or that you don't take the real work in different minutes. So y'all, we, we, classes, you'll have to look at your board, I understand calling the principal, what, the, the classroom today, so we're just gonna have to...
You know, when, when they start putting the roof down, they'll, they'll put the clips down, and you'll, they'll be able to hear the insulation, more than anything, screwed going through that. Not really the biggest, biggest sound that people want, and I thought, and then we isolate pretty much one classroom area, or two classroom areas per day.
And you know sometimes up there, that wind gets been over a hundred miles an hour.
So in land law, I spent my... I spent my misspent youth over here moving the roof.
Okay.
I don't have a safe, safe shift job, so I can fish up the moon.
Can I, I want to ask one question. That's a mistake. If we were to get through COVID by spring, in your professional opinion, now I'll put me on the spot, do you think these bids would be any better? If there is there, you hear that you can't get mail right now, steel manufacturing is down, it's hard to get this, it's hard to get this supply. If you think people get back to work and we learn to deal with this COVID and we get through the winter and people are catching that, that there could be a possibility that a bid in the spring could come in at a better price.
Okay.
Just your opinion. I don't put me on the spot.
Anytime, anytime there's a job for the north, the price goes up at least ten percent. No matter what the other conditions are. I've been doing this for forty years. And, and I know that that don't, that sounds like a, and I can explain it, I'm explaining.
Because they know what they understood the first time.
Yeah, and so they kind of say, whatever.
I was just talking.
But I'm, I'm not trying to, we'll do anything you want to do. You know, we, we work for you as an easy airway. That's technically sound. But, uh, but I would, I would, uh, I would talk. You've got two contractors who really know this job and you.
Yes.
They did have to work some. I, I don't think so. Metaphors are good.
As they are next meeting, July the sixth. We're, we're, like it's sad that way through.
I can't make the motion, so I'm just.
Where it is. What does rest of the board want to do? What do you want to do?
Want to move on to the high track. It's got to be the that, that bottom down. It probably won't be the cheap. Don't they care the wheel? Our. Our main thought. You know, play that with you.
History, Dennis, probably, too.
I say, with these motions, might, might surprise people, but it's. And, no, I, I, I'll, I mean, the discussion is moot at this point as far as need and, and possibilities. I mean, we, we, we were aware of that, Kevin, this is. Uh, and, uh, it, it just from, as the, the being counted in need, you know, looks at our budget this year and what we've already extended pace what we started with. Uh, you know, you know, we started budget discussions. And, uh, it's me, you know, running backwards, uh, thinking about that. Uh, I would like to, I mean, we, we can, I, I, I think it's gonna have to be done. I, I would like to examine as we look at the funding, uh, rather than just a, you know, put it down automatically as out of appropriations and, uh, starting discussions, maybe try to look at some avenues where it could be better from or through, uh, in a little bit different way. But as far as it being of the July, June, I don't think there's any way around the back that needs to be done.
Let me, let me ask a question if I might, if I could. When does, when we get a lot of money? Is that far to ask?
Yeah.
Why is it that I'm the way to say? I think it's toward all about time to get the best price, get the best, the best quality deals. But it's not until the bottom line is probably there. And, uh, I'll take care of it. So, uh, I agree with Mr. Donovan. Uh, the agenda for July.
I'm just, I, I, just don't want to automatically deposit, let's take a hundred thousand dollars out in front of the audience. I mean, I want us to look at some other options.
But I want to have that, I think we can, I think we can discuss that.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with each one of me that it's got to be done. Like I said, we started talking about this in two thousand eight. And, uh, we just need to go ahead and carry it to our July the sixth meeting. And we'll discuss and carry that.
To Dennis's point too, and, and the echo of something I heard, when he said times aren't always gonna be good. And you gotta do it while it's, while you can. And it needs to be done, there's no question. Times aren't always gonna, something's not always.
Well, I mean, we know this, that we're gonna pay more money to fix what that is, or costs.
Absolutely.
Is it gonna, see what the lottery is this week? So, so we.
My chances would be better if I bought one, I think.
And it's still, it's got much.
So maybe it's at some point.
It's, it's appropriated by the map. So I'll just remind the board that we did take a million, nine forty-seven to, for the high school property. So we have a balance in the lottery as of, um, June first of three hundred and sixty-four thousand.
And that comes in the month of.
We're allocated so much amount.
So they go for that money in schools and then they put it in general. I'm talking about the general sound room side.
Right. Okay, now, I'll bring this up at this point. The House last night, uh, proposed bill twelve twenty-five for education and transportation bonds. But that's to go to the voters for school profits. At three point one million dollars. But that's if approved by the voters in the fall. That's just like last year's budget was supposed to give us some capital money for our school profits and you see where that's at. So if is the word I don't like.
But in, in, in those things, I think are immediate discussions because.
They're not here yet.
Well, and they're not gonna be read to act.
Right.
They're, I mean, whatever they propose, we're not gonna be able to go, oh, by the way, let's throw that back to July. So, I mean, I don't think we can. I mean, we can, we can, we can look for that, we can hope for that, but I'll say that's gonna affect this decision. Not blame affect this decision, it's a three hundred and four thousand, sixty-four thousand.
All right. I think we've discussed the Cross North School project. And that's when we may come to our next agenda, uh, Adrian Middle School, our condition project.
Thank you again. We have had tremendous success with our concept of a standalone unit. And, uh, Mr. Burleson, Mike Burleson and their maintenance team went in and they personally installed the first time this test unit. And it took a little bit longer. And I'll, I'll quote Mr. Cannon. It took long because we didn't know what we were doing, but we figured it out. And they, they sure did. And, uh, the room has stayed a perfect sixty-eight, seventy-two degrees, even under the stressed conditions they were interested in. Testing. So we have had tremendous success with our tests. Uh, so, Mr. Cannon, do you want to expand on that? And where we're at basically is looking to see what it would take to install each of the units. There's about a four by four hole that has to be cut wrong.
Yes.
For each unit. So you want to expand? The, uh, so I guess bottom line, this is the bottom line. What we're looking at is about two thousand dollars a unit for the material. Uh, and the unit itself, uh, due to purchase total twenty-five to, to complete first and second floor. So we're looking at just that, I think, sixty grand. Um, however, uh, what we are in the process of trying to determine is could we get the same concept installed, uh, a licensed professional? And what would that cost to do? Uh, the reason for that is it took about a day to install the unit for our maintenance team. So for us to install twenty-five units, it's gonna take months. Which means our maintenance team will be devoted to that project over the summer. We might have time to do the normal, um, processes that, you know, with the changing, uh, air filters and going in and taking care of the chillers as we crank those up. You know, all the preventative maintenance that goes on, plus the things that come up over the summer. We need, you know, we got, we need the move. So, uh, and I'm not against the maintenance department doing it. And, and they're not against doing it either, as long as everybody understands that this is the route we go. And they're gonna be, you know, this would be priority. You know, unless there's sparks flying or water filling up the room somewhere, but it's wrong, they'll take.
I have an opinion on that, sir. I think we've got a contract for that.
If you're going to get a quarter. Sorry, one thing.
Right. And that was another concern. And then you take away.
When you're going up to eighty-six forty, you're making one pretty much.
And so, and I think, and you're dealing with people that do this every day.
Right.
So, you know.
Now, I agree with that. You know, so, uh, but as of last time I spoke to Mr. Cannon, uh, he is not, not on prospect and he's going, yes, still investigating whatever the labor could be all cost to do. As soon as we have that number, we will provide it to you. Uh, but those were the two routes, as of right now. It is working. And I, I, I could have said, so it's held that room. I told Mike, I said, I want you to go put three or four acres in there and crank the eight up to ninety-three and see. So it's, it's one thing to crank base in all first of June and get a room set and be. It's another thing when it's August and the sun's hitting that building and the bridge's warm. So, so fight it. And they did, and it.
Well, I mean, don't we, I mean, not to leave you down, push you, but that this seems to be a time sensitive item too.
Yes.
I mean, did you get this done? You get the contract ready and get going and get this done before the kids get back to school?
We did, we did. And, uh, so I, I need to push, uh, Mike, see where we are with contractors. I know you reached out to, I believe, three different people, uh, to try to see. The other thing that we, you deal with, uh, when you're going out, contracted labor, uh, is again workforce. Trying to find someone that is, um, six months out. But, uh, you know, there's only so many HDAC people in Avery County getting them done just in service. AC.
Are you having full power to each unit?
Yes, sir. I mean, they'd be able to pull power to most of you, not, not, you know, not every man, but they'll need full power.
Question about that, about the standalone. How, how does that work in common areas? Uh, like, I think about how you're going to school's front office, uh, that, that big open area where you're.
Uh, we would have to strategically place them.
Okay.
Multiple locations.
That's, that's gonna take into consideration.
Contract itself, it's about eighteen hundred square feet. So, you know, we work it out.
Okay. I'm just curious if that was gonna treat the.
No, we.
Seems like it would take away from the effect a little better, or make it a little more difficult if it was not, if the common areas were warm and then the classroom, you know.
No, we, we factored in the common.
I'm dying.
Frank, it's a bitch.
Uh, I don't have that, it's in the bitch.
Right.
Here, I have. But, uh, I've got it over here on my manager's name, I don't get it. I got the spec sheet, so I can do that.
What we should do is. I didn't know that. I think we should do this. I, at least we tried that, nevermind. God told me, this is the best. No, we're, that, that.
At least you will cycle, period, speed income.
Yes. Yes, that they would provide supplementary aid.
Yeah.
Uh, which is a plus. It may result in energy savings.
Yes. That's more of these. Who knows, a few years, but that might be something, you know, you've got four rooms. You've got to teach it, it's time to go break or something. You'll be teaching across the change.
So that is that. We're gonna try to get on, on the go ahead quick on that, if, if we get a person.
Don't have it learned next year.
I found, these are all these places, my primary here, the, could end up placebo thermostat helps a lot. People get a lot warmer when they turn the thermostat on. No, that, well, that's big connection to that. But, you know, I mean, I've, I've seen them absolutely work, seen in place. Please, one more chance.
My jet's starting that up. We'll, we'll just move along to the Cranberry Middle Freedom Trail. HDAC project in, when you tell, have you gone?
No.
Okay.
The unit is on the dot. Cranberry. Well, I was told today, uh, we have moved forward. They will begin developing the old unit and installing the new unit. Well, that's had an upside. Uh, I don't know what to be talking about.
All right. Now, I thought the birdie gone to Cranberry's middle trail.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, all right.
So who's doing that work, Chris?
Uh, CSS boiler. They were the low bid. Is that lengthy process? He tells us that he will definitely have that unit installed and running before students come back on August seventeenth.
You're talking about PH three?
Yes. And now, the heat, the boiler may not be installed before the children actually come back in the building on seventeen, but the boiler will be up in punctual before October.
Is that not a sexual boiler in your state?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I just think, I'm not complaining, I'm just asking a question with my history, which they can attest to in the school system. But I will do the question of complete boiler, it's a sexual boiler.
I can't answer that right now.
That's our question, Steve.
It is a fair question. And.
We have sections.
Yes. We've replaced single sections, uh, in boilers in the past. I do know that when we did the high school boiler last summer, uh, when we looked into it, it actually ended up to be more cost effective to replace the entire unit than to replace individual sleeves. Um, because of the way they, uh, construct those now. Uh, they come in packets and you can't get a single sleeve. You have to end up getting three sleeves, the way the high schools work. So the more sleeves you got, cheaper the total cost was. Um, I'll need to go back and confirm with Mike. I do remember discussing that and I can't remember how many sleeves. I do remember discussing that, and I can't remember how many sleeves in that boiler are actually really we ever had an issue with. It may be in one of those scenarios where also the number of sleeves were needing to replace. A total replacement ended up actually being just a little bit more than getting just the individual units. But I'll have to I'll have to get you an answer and come back later. Charles, fine.
All right. Sorry. We'll move right along, but everything, Avery High School's addition and manifestation.
We're still moving along steadily at Avery County High School. We've been notified and it was announced, uh, earlier this month, I think June ninth is our meeting, which we have a facility work session. And, uh, the end date will be completed on the additions as a moving target. We were informed that timing would be April twenty-one now. So we've been all surprised by that extended completion date during this work session. So we're in the process right now following up with the architect and the, uh, general contractor to see if we can locate or have provided two of the recovery schedule, to try to get that timeline trimmed back up to the reach month completion date. As you all know, in January, we were told Christmas of two thousands when that project would be completed, with the dry end date of Thanksgiving. So, uh, it was quite a surprise to all of us. Uh, that's where we are. We received notice that the piping is being, the trenches are being dug. Safe fence is put up around the side of that school, standing room looking at it. They did hit some rock. I don't know if they hit more rocks since our last update, but there was some rock in that trench that created a little bit of a delay, which we anticipated, a little bit of rock, and they're making progress. We're still looking at the labor, uh, the amount of labor to come to that campus each day. Hopefully, they'll start picking it up and have more workers on site. COVID nineteen has impacted the labor force somewhat. We had electricians stand down, I think, for a total of ten days that were quarantined. So a total of ten days, which electric work stopped. So now that has been picked back up, the electricians have been cleared, so hopefully we can see some good weather without rain as we proceed with the summer and see some significant progress in the projects. Jeffrey, you want anything, which will bring to. I believe it.
Does COVID, I know it affects everything, and I don't expect this, but do the COVID days fit into weather days? But those are a new starting point, so how does it stay, it's COVID, always have to be on the end of their schedules, weather, rain days.
I don't think that COVID days align with weather days, but what we're seeing is that COVID has impacted the access to materials and the number of people working for the subcontractors.
Must stay, not our fault.
I, I do know that, I had a conversation with Pierre last week, and he did say that there was some discussion from branch going the direction of basically requesting additional days due to COVID. Um, and Pierre said, we're telling them no, but contractually, it can't be done. But there is a clause in the contract that will prohibit that, so that they cannot, uh, use COVID as an excuse for an extension of their contract.
I have, I'm gonna share the rumors, sorry, we all can. But I've been told that, uh, only eighty percent of the days that they have missed to be accounted for properly, twenty percent of it cannot be, that they're not actually days, that they can't take, you know, that they can use as weather days. Is that accurate? And who's keeping up with that?
Architect, well, that's that information. Um, we can certainly, I'll be happy to chase that. I will be happy to get on the phone tomorrow and request that information.
Well, you know, we, we mute, we mute. We all said that the timeline could come off immediately.
Now, I, I will tell you, I have seen the chart of the weather days that they are requesting, shows if this is the day, this was the condition. So I, I have seen that, I just kind of have that in my possession. But I said, I'll be happy to, to, uh, request that copy. We'll dig into it.
Oh, yeah, I just.
I've not heard that rumor myself, but, uh.
Be fun with the work.
No, that's right, I, I'm trying to, I'm just saying.
Different chunk.
Yeah, but I will, uh, I will definitely ask, and, um.
You know, it, it, it serves all of us to watch. Now, I'm sorry, they destroyed me.
Each day that, that there, each time that they are talking about hitting rock, I want you to look at Rob Johnson and smile and say, that's from Dennis.
Also look at him saying, you were told this was wrong. She was told more than that.
No, they still say she's stiff, though.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's a good.
Has noticed on COVID, they're gonna lay down times, they can't have a cure on it, because it's in such a place for X amount of days actually. But that is not billed into their contract now, and it's not our fault. That's not our fault, but Chad, that's one thing, and again, their contract, I mean, we're talking, that's why.
Yeah, it's, everything has to sit for days, once it arrives.
Sorry.
Six days before they can touch it, so.
And we have that in order in advance, so that we, we have, we have been very proactive in this and saying, why is this not done, and, you know, can you not order earlier? So it's not like we're just set back hoping for, well, we really have been trying to say, is there a problem? How, why is it not progressed, what we did.
And there have been no children in the building. You know.
And staging, location, placement, there was a challenge, but Jeffrey's worked with, uh, Tim, uh, SRO over there, and Martin Parler, to come up with a temporary solution. He's part of the middle school, we understand, we could relocate office approach. So we found some additional storage space to accommodate the pre-ordering well in advance, you know, this way. So we have a solution, we'll see if Pierre was on the side. Can I relate?
And we, we asked, I mean, as far as, I don't know if y'all remember, last summer, we were looking right after graduation to be there digging, but it was all up in July before, early ground up, probably. So we were, we had a pretty good heart-to-heart conversation with them because of, of days that stood in, I mean, you all know, this, if you're, if you're missing June and July in Avery Countyville, you've missed your two best months, right, or two of the best months. Um, so, yeah, we, uh, we were disappointed that it came back as April COVID, like Gregman was saying, uh, in, uh, January or February, they told us one, and in four months, we lost four months, and thinking, how did that happen?
Well, those four months, those hundred and twenty days that were out now, in a lot of ways, were the, the hundred and twenty days lost by the printing.
Yeah.
And, you know.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, it, it all was hinging, I mean, that, that initial day of getting in in August, starting actually initially, you know, we were supposed to be going in, uh, the school started this fall. Uh, but, uh, yeah, those shows, you're right, it's those initial days. Uh, that was contingent upon getting in, getting it dried in by Thanksgiving, this past Thanksgiving, or, or December, actually, that's what it was supposed to be. And of course, we still don't have a roof.
One of the things that happened to those, uh, once they started moving on that dirt beginning at the front of the school, they had to soften through the sole man. Well, that pushed all of the, the, the building into a different direction than them. And then they had to go in there and they worked in mud, because there was, the ground there was rough. So, you know, they had to gravel with the new dirt, and so once you started, let's say, pushed all that work into December and January, you know, it had to slow, it slowed down because they would have had dry, living in and where I worked. So, um, I visited the site a couple of weeks ago, and there's quite a bit of work that's been done that you cannot see from the ground. That might be something that everyone, what I can do sometimes go see just once there, because you actually have two halves of the building, and it's got a hole in it, so they can get paint in there and get some things done, but you're obviously a dress, we've had much work they've done. It does not look that much.
It'd be good to do another tour like we did.
We can set that up.
People ask those questions, even though we aren't in there every day or anything.
Maybe between that and your July meeting, that's, that's almost right, that's running out of time.
Just wondering, I, I, I.
Maybe around that, so, but we'll look at calendars and have, uh, standing for the game, the boards and.
If we could just have a, a, make someone be quiet, we know.
And it's like, it says, you go to Congress, you run, what, four chairs, ladies, such a good thing. You can walk the steps up, or you can walk the steps down, and you can see, you can get everything, you can get parts of the building, it's very, that one's like that.
Great, great.
The catapult ones, very good shape.
But we need a roof.
And it's a metal roof.
Yes.
What's he doing?
All right, let's move right along to our next thing on the agenda, other school related issues. We want to talk about that. Or then you have any.
Which one do you want?
So, the only thing I wanted to bring up, Dr. Regman, is what we talked about yesterday, uh, after school. And we did meet with Wammy, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Wammy is committed to providing, uh, after school to, to the citizens and, and students of Avery County and working families. And they said, the money's gonna come from somewhere, so, uh, they're gonna get at it with the grants, and, uh, we've got a meeting next Monday, uh, with Amy and John Blackburn, and we're just gonna try to fix the issues, and we've got to have after school for our working families, so, uh, if you know, any grants we could go after, you know, they're, they're just like, we're gonna, we can do this, so. Correct.
That's exactly right, and I appreciate the leadership and your determination on this to sustain this essential program for our kids and our families. And arranging the meeting next Monday, if you'd like.
Have, uh, have you talked to them downstairs?
We have talked some downstairs, and we've talked our issues. Yes, DSS, uh, yes, and Wammy is talking with them to get accredited, so state dollars can help pay for after school. We, we need to try to get to that point. And then Dr. Regman has, you know, kind of said, well, look, you know, number one cost is personnel, number two is the food, and feeding, which is so important. Uh, so we've kind of started talking about how we can make this happen.
We can weave it into our separate program, uh, understanding, informed us after, I mean, that's a very good possibility.
So.
Well, it's flat. Covered everything, fine.
I'll just go away and step out, and let you know that the board approved the calendars since the last time we met. We had several options in terms of the calendar changes that were imposed on the school system based on COVID nineteen legislation, and the only feasible calendar that we could consider was the August seventeenth start date. I know there's a lot of buzz around start dates, it is confirmed, our calendar will start for students, uh, August seventeenth. So right now, that's when students will return, and I look forward to seeing kids in classrooms and teachers teaching kids.
Do you believe that we're, that we're gonna be allowed to have school start back then?
I can speak from a very.
And I, I'm just asking your professional opinion.
My professional opinion is the best thing for us to do for Avery County starts from August seventeenth, and that's my hope and prayer, that we can do that for our kids. However, we got two months between now and then, so anything can happen between now and then.
I heard the crew was gonna start a main date at Blackhole, so people couldn't see what's really going on.
I miss that. But, uh, they're, they're giving updates on a pretty continual basis coming out of Raleigh, um, many folks are at the table trying to come up with ideas and scenarios, but I think basically it's totally an opinion. There's gonna be some local decisions to be made based on the actions of the Board of Education, do what's in the best interest of Avery County. And that's my hope, is that they'll leave it up to the local Boards of Education to make those reentry decisions.
Wow, what a novel approach.
Yes.
Wouldn't it be nice if our founders, Nintendo, most of them, go, most, go, but that's what's back in your life, the closest.
All right. I think we covered everything, and, uh, we didn't bring you here to starve you today, so Cindy has.
Truth, of course.
And, uh, so, yeah, I hear a motion from our board to close the meeting.
So, good.
Thank you.
All right, boy, made the motion, and Tim said. I want a paper, Woody, Martha, I.
Dennis, over, John.
And pedal side.
Wait, man, side.
Harrison's close.
All right, go away, adjourn.
Yes.
I was gonna say. I was just gonna thank y'all for looking at this and, and working with us to help take care of this, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you. That's it. I was gonna say.
Well, go back, I have most. Second, second.
Thanks, big, all the thanks.
I'm gonna say one thing. I want to thank Avery County Board of Commissioners, President, and the President, for what all they have done for Avery County students. Avery County had one of the first designated football fields thanks to the Commissioners of North Carolina. They built a tennis court behind the high school, second to none, thanks to the commission. We were one of the first systems to say, to put a technology device in every student in the school system. We didn't start part one, part two, we done that on our, thanks to Board of County Commissioners. They built a new school, banner, thanks to the Board of County Commissioners. Okay, for years, we've been working on a high school. Thanks to this Board of County Commissioners, we have gotten outstanding schools started, and we're gonna see it finish. Something that Avery County will be proud. This is my life's meeting, you all, and I did, I can't thank you all enough for everything that you have done for the school system all year, for all the students in it, for everything. And it's just like the meeting tonight, y'all are bending over backwards on a closed budget, but you're still trying to do what's best for the students of Avery County. And I want to thank each and every one of you, present boards and past boards. Martha and I have been down with them a lot of times. Thank you all so much.
That deserves a hand, right?
Like, most of the fact that this is the life's meeting with us, or you could say. I want to thank him for his service to the students and the children of Avery County. His service didn't just start coming on Board of Education. His, uh, longer than that, his service started back to the Park Street, seventy-two, so, and, yeah. And I, I mean, twenty-five years. And I want, I want to know, I appreciate, I know this more appreciate, so, and what he's done. He's been a public servant for Avery County for years.
He has, he stayed for untold thousands by, uh, knowing, like, again, you could.
Crawling in the field.
Yeah, knowing what the buildings are, you, you always know, uh, the buildings inside and out, and, uh, it's, uh, it's bittersweet to see Steve go, I know he's ready to go on and move on, it's sweet for him, it's bitter for us. Yeah, well, we do, that's right, we do have a cell phone, but, but thank you all for those kind of work. So thank you all for those kind of words. And he, uh, he is, has been such an asset to this system. Appreciate it.
All right. We need to ask John and Kevor, leave this.
Good evening, Bob. Leave this comes for you. Thanksgiving, you are such a good God, Lord. I will know that you love us and take care of us and father even through all this pandemic.